In collaboration with the local hospitals, clinics, and freestanding emergency rooms, the city has helped facilitate setting up a call center that you just referenced along with an off-site testing facility, a place that we can do testing. This afternoon, they tested around eight people this afternoon at that facility. The process for getting a coronavirus test, the best process is to call that call center between nine and four Monday through Friday. That call center is staffed by the SFA Nursing School, Memorial, and Nacogdoches Medical Center Hospitals, XLR, and a number of our local clinics. So it's a collaborative effort by the whole healthcare community in our town. That number's 936-468-4787. That information is available on our Facebook page, on our website, and also at both hospitals, Nacogdoches Medical Center, Nacogdoches Memorial Health. And that number is really available throughout the community. We encourage people to call between nine and four Monday through Friday where a healthcare professional is going to answer the phone, talk people through their signs and symptoms, and if it's appropriate, direct them to that freestanding center where they can get a COVID-19 test. The people that it's appropriate for will have symptoms of the virus, and they're going to ask them a number of other questions. So this is not a center where you can just drive up and have a test performed, but you'll have an access number and a time slot, and so there won't be long lines waiting out into the road or anything like that. The testing center is open from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. It was designed to be scalable, so if we need to add hours to be able to get all the testing in that's appropriate, then we can do that. The hospitals are prepared to scale that as we need to. Currently, the joint city and county incident management team has been working constantly for the last couple of weeks. The primary purpose of your city staff and what your city staff has been doing is making sure we have updated information from our state and federal partners, disseminating public information, and helping our partner agencies and our stakeholders throughout the community with their public information, and making sure that we're getting that out in a timely fashion, assisting the hospitals, and coordinating with our other healthcare providers, and making sure the hospital message is what we're conveying. So we're really supporting our local hospitals, who are the bedrock of this effort. The other thing we're doing is providing a tremendous amount of logistical support for those hospitals, making sure that we're able to stand up those testing centers and provide whatever they need to be able to fulfill their healthcare function. And then we're also planning for expanded operations. We're making sure that we have a plan for the next seven, 14, and 21 days as we move forward, and we know that the case numbers are going to grow. We do expect that there will be many more people that will be diagnosed with COVID-19 in our community, and we're trying to make sure that we have a good, solid response. In addition to that, city operations have been adjusted to reduce employee exposure to the virus, which will allow us to maintain our operations long-term, but we've done it in ways that we believe minimizes the impact on citizens. We're still doing building and electrical and plumbing inspections, and we're still providing all those essential services. Garbage is getting picked up, parks are getting mowed, all the things that we have to do to maintain our city in a health-sanitary and appropriate way. We're taking care of, making sure that we're doing that. And again, we're having plans, planning seven, 14, and 21 days out to make sure that we do have those continuity of operations so our citizens can continue to get the services they've come to expect. And I'll be happy to answer any more questions you might have.
I'd like to say thank you very much to you and Chief Seavey and to all of the city staff for how well and how quickly you all have responded to a very unusual situation. And I guess my only question is, do we have any notion of any sort of timeline at which we might have a greater capacity for doing higher-volume testing?
So we have more of, we have the ability to scale that testing. What's really important is that we're testing people that meet the CDC's criteria, because the hospitals have said over and over, and the State Department of State Health Services has told us over and over, if we flood the testing centers with tests, we just create a backlog. And so really, the key is to take the people in the community that really need to be tested, their signs and symptoms, and a healthcare professional, their physician or physician assistant or nurse practitioner have said, yes, this person really needs to be tested, and make sure that we're sending those tests on the front end. And that's who's being referred to this off-site testing center. And by doing that, we make sure that we don't overwhelm the system, and because as they receive tests, we push back the length of time that it takes to get those results. And so right now, those tests are taking a reasonably short period of time, but if they receive a thousand tests a day in Tyler, that number's going to exponentially grow. And so we want to be able to get the tests on the most critical patients, the patients that are most likely to have COVID-19, to get those test processes quickly as we can. I'd refer back, out of the state of Texas, since testing has begun, 21,424 people have been tested across the state, and that's the numbers as of noon today. So a little over 21,000 people have been tested. Those patients presented either after a direct exposure with somebody that was known to have COVID-19, or they presented to their healthcare provider with signs and symptoms of COVID-19, and their healthcare provider thought it prudent to send that test in to the state or the private laboratory. That's 21,000 people that the healthcare providers have sent those tests on. Out of those, a little under 1,400 have been confirmed cases. So there are a number of influenza-like illnesses that look very much like COVID-19, and there are a number of those things, obviously, in the state of Texas. There are a lot of those things that are still getting people sick. And so, again, we do have a very scalable system. They did approximately eight tests this afternoon. They weren't finished when I got my number, but we think they got about eight, but that's easily scalable for us to go to 16, 32, 64, and to scale it beyond that. And we designed a system, the city engineering group worked to do the traffic engineering study and make sure that the location was designed in such a way that it could handle stacking of vehicles. The city staff and our logistics team made sure that we had the ability to add additional tents, so we could add additional lanes. We also can expand the hours, and so we want to do that in a methodical manner. And as the testing center finds more and more people that need to be scheduled for a test, we don't want to delay the sampling. And so the effort is going to be, the goal is going to be, those people that do need a test, that go through the process, will be scheduled really in a timely manner. And at whatever point we realize we have to scale that, both all of our healthcare partners out there are ready to do that scaling and to scale that up. It's really important that we started relatively, did a little bit of a soft opening, and so we did a little bit of a soft opening, but everything went really smoothly, and the system is really getting in place now. And I think that as time goes by, we'll have that in next week, depending on the demand and depending on the need as determined by those physicians, physician assistants, nurse practitioners that are in the call center, as they determine that demand, then we were able to scale that up to a higher number.
Great. Thank you very much.
We want to support what those professionals tell us we need to be doing, so.
Thank you again for the very thorough response.
You have anything?
No.
Okay. Yes, and our thanks to Michael Self. I guess he's doing his new.
Chief Self is very busy running our incident management team and working with our county partners and making sure that we have, that we stay in a unified operation and make sure that everybody is lockstep and that we're really working together for the good of the community. And I can't say enough about all of our partners across the community, from the United Way and the Chamber of Commerce and Love Inc., and all of our nonprofits across the community have really stepped up, and the local churches are really working to make sure that their elderly populations and those people that are really highly at risk for coronavirus, that they're checking on people and doing those things, Mayor, that you asked the community to do, is reach out to your elderly neighbors and reach out to the infirm and make sure that we're doing everything we can to take care of one another, because we are limited in our staff numbers and what the city can do and what the city's function is, but really our nonprofits, our churches, and the people that live here frankly are doing an amazing job. We see people at the stores, and we see people in groups, but if you really look and you really pay attention, people are doing a good job with social distancing, the numbers at the stores, you know, people are having to buy groceries, and no matter what measures we take, people are still going to need groceries, and people are still going to need pet food and to be able to take care of their families and their animals. And so the community has really come together and is doing an amazing job of keeping our social distance and, you know, bearing through this process. And so I'm really thankful to everybody in the community and for you as a council for giving us an opportunity to serve.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Nacogdoches, authorized by Section 418.108 of the Texas Government Code.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So it is March 26, 2020. The time is now 5:45 p.m. Council will be going into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074.
We will vacate the room so they don't have to.
Sorry. Okay. So we want. March 26, 2020. It is now 5:59 p.m., and we are returning from executive session. And we do, well, before we get to the decision, I want to explain a little bit about how our city manager search is going and how that is affecting what we've been doing lately. Our interim city manager that we had hired, Mr. Rod Hogan, we have truly, truly enjoyed him being here. He has been an asset. He is now in Plano with his family. So council is needing to make a decision about having a more person in place here in Nacogdoches. So we are going to be naming a city manager, an interim city manager this evening, but we did want to thank Rod Hogan for all his help. He will be staying in an advisory, special advisory position, because he has a lot of experience and has helped us out tremendously. So with that, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we replace Rod Hogan as interim city manager with Chief Seavey, where he would receive retroactive pay back to this past Monday where he started in the role. And that compensation would be the same compensation that we have in place, total comp, that we have in place for our city manager currently.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And welcome to the job. You are up to it, and we are thrilled for you to be in that role for the next foreseeable future. We are also going to be continuing our search for a permanent city manager, and we will keep you updated on that as we go forward. Agenda number eight, consider approval of amendment to the consulting agreement by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Strategic Government Resources.
Mayor, council members, Jeff Davis, city attorney. Just very briefly, the item before you, item number eight, is in regard to a consulting agreement.
uh, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we replace Rod Hogan as interim city manager with Chief Seavey, uh, where he would receive retroactive pay back to this past Monday where he started in the role. Um, and that compensation would be the same compensation that we have in place, total comp, that we have in place for our city manager, uh, currently.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. And welcome to the job. You are up to it and we are thrilled for you to be in that role for the next foreseeable future. Uh, we are also going to be continuing our search for a permanent city manager, uh, and, uh, we will keep you updated on that, uh, as we go forward. Agenda number, uh, eight, consider approval of amendment to the consulting agreement by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Strategic Government Resources.
Mayor Councilmember Jeff Davis, City Attorney, uh, just very briefly, uh, the item before you, item number eight, uh, is in regard to a consulting agreement, uh, that the city, as you will recall, entered into, uh, back in January with Strategic Governmental Resources. That's the same S G R group that's conducting our, uh, overall, uh, manager search. That was for the particular, uh, contract that we are amending, uh, proposing for amendment this evening is the one for provision of consulting services for interim city manager, um, uh, based on the actions just taken by council, uh, with regard to, uh, the naming of Chief Seavey as, as our acting interim now. Um, I would say that, uh, with regard to, uh, Mr. Rod Hogan, it has been my privilege to work with him. He's been a tremendous asset and resource for the City of Nacogdoches. Um, I thank S G R for, uh, for providing Mr. Hogan his services. He is, he has, uh, truly been an asset. Uh, with this amendment to the agreement, it would allow for us to continue to call upon the considerable, uh, knowledge, uh, and services to be provided through S G R and, uh, Mr. Hogan, uh, by amending it for the consulting, uh, agreement from the provision of interim city management service, manager services to that of a senior, um, advisor. Um, essentially, all the other provisions of the agreement, uh, will remain as they originally were entered into back on January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty. Um, if you have any questions, I'll certainly step to the side to see through any comments and, uh, afterwards, any questions, I'll certainly answer them to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. Uh, is there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay. None? Counsel, any questions or comments on Mr. Davis?
No.
Okay. Then Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the amendment to the contract.
I move that we approve agenda item number eight to amend our contact with Strategic Government Resources.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we, uh, approve the amendment to the con, to the contract or consulting agreement with S G R. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. That concludes our meeting of March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. Be kind and be safe.